This meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of all of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely, as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, you can dial 1-408-650-3123, with access code 235235861. Or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. And with that, we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all.
Okay, we have no public comments. And with that, we'll move to public hearings, presentations. And we have the Whitty Street Home Builders LLC for the local initiative project for the housing development at 16 Perry Place. They've asked that this meeting be continued to the October 24th meeting 2022.
Make that motion.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. And for communications, we have the letter in our packet. It's from the Town Planner on Special Town Warrant, Article 23, with the planning board recommendations.
No, that's, it's just a standard letter that we just provide to the board so you know what the status is of the item. It will go from here to the committee.
There's no action tonight on this one, though. Does anybody have any questions on Article 23? No? Moving on to Select Board General Items. We have the Auburn Chamber of Commerce, Seasonable Open Air License on Town Property, Town of Auburn Goddard Park for the Scarecrow Your Business Event. We have a letter from DCG. I don't believe we have anybody presenting.
We don't, but I just want to point out that Kerry Cunningham, who's the current president of the Auburn Chamber of Commerce, is here. So Kerry, if you want to come up for a minute. So this is an event that the chamber has held. I believe this is the third annual event. Yes, it is. So we'll try to Kerry.
Good evening, Kerry.
Good evening, boy. Thank you. Yeah, so this is our third year. This was an activity or an event that was born out of COVID, so we could get some business involvement. And so it's called Scarecrow Your Business. And the first year, we had it right at the fire station at the Goddard Park. And then last year, because of the construction, we did hold it at the library. So we're hoping to hold it back at Goddard Park. I did, I'm not sure if the DCG had given you a site map. I did my best I could with my yellow dots. But I did walk it with Joanna and Kenny. So, and they had their utilities map out. And so where we are going, the street side of the walkway, on the outside of the gazebo, there are no utility lines there. So in case there were any stakes that were going to be, which I don't expect to be extremely long into the ground, they wouldn't interrupt anything. So yeah, it's just, it's open to all businesses. So anybody, if you have a business in town and you want to scarecrow your business, and then we vote, and it's just, it's a fun event and it's a great building experience for businesses and their employees.
Members have any questions? No? Town administration have any questions?
No, I just want to say it's a great event. It's really nice to see Goddard Park be used.
Yeah, and it has gotten, when we did have it at Goddard Park originally, that first year, we did get a lot of comments on our social sites and our website. What's going on? Where's all the scarecrows for? So we're hoping, and I know we're down to the wire. So they are going to be out from October 15th to the 23rd is when they put them out. And then they have to be up by November 6th.
Okay. And where would businesses in the community?
So they register. So we're gonna, as soon as I get the okay, we're sending out emails to all of our members. And then we're going to put out flyers at local banks and anywhere that we can, just to get involved. Because it is open to more than just chamber members. It is open to all businesses, because it is kind of a fun thing to do. So as much as, as much attention that we can bring to the event is great. So yeah, we put it on our website, social media. Probably put, you know, make a comment or two on the Auburn site as well.
And do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state town and any of its departments, board commissions have been fulfilled. Sublicense is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It is a vote.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Katie.
We actually have a second motion on this in regard to the license fee.
Okay. I will make a motion to waive the license fee.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye. Thank you. And moving on to 5B. We have potential votes on the October 18th, 2022, Special Meeting Ward Articles numbers 2, 8, 9, and 11.
Could I ask the Chair for consideration to move up items 6B and 6C? Because if for any reason those were not approved for use of ARPA funds, which the board had suggested at the last meeting of discussion, then we would not just keep them in this next item where you talk about it, because they're, so I just think in terms of order, it would be better to do those first.
It would be better to move that way. All right, do we have a motion to move up Agenda Items 6B and 6C?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Thank you for doing that. So at the last board meeting, first of all, I would point out there were two memos in your packet that go along with those items.
Yes.
So at the last board meeting, there was discussion about whether we could utilize ARPA funds rather than tax level dollars for these two items. So the answer is yes, we can do that. And we put them on here as a potential vote tonight to utilize the ARPA funds. If the board didn't vote to use the ARPA funds tonight, then we would leave the article on the warrant. If it does vote to use the ARPA funds, then that evening at town meeting, we would have someone make a motion to postpone indefinitely the articles. So there are, again, there's two memos. The first is a request for $10,000 for the installation of water backflow valves in two town-owned properties. One is Town Hall and one is 21 Fesant Court, which is the location of AYFS. The reason for this is that there is a mandate under the Mass Drinking Water Regulations for Crest Connections that requires that these backflow valves be put in place. We have put them in a couple of other buildings as we've been asked to do that. And we had the money and the budget to do that, but this was not budgeted. So therefore, that's why we were going for a town meeting warrant article. If you'd like to use ARPA funds, we can. So that's the first one. I can wait for a vote if you want on that one before I go to the next one.
Okay. All right. Do members have any questions, concerns, positions on the matter?
Mr. Chairman, I know the question was asked, I think, at the last meeting. What do we have for a balance? What's the running balance on ARPA? So I think there's a good opportunity to at least convey that to the board. We've committed so far 1,911,565, leaving an unobligated balance of just shy of 3.1 million.
All right. I can tell you guys that my feeling is that it's rather inconsequential as compared to the overall budget. But where we have bigger ticket items still, where we, the communications tower with the, some of the infrastructure projects.
HVAC.
HVAC. I mean, who knows how this is all shakeout with the ARPA dollars? But I myself preferably would like to keep these as warrant items versus under ARPA, just to keep that ARPA money for those larger ticket items, not knowing where they're going to land. And I don't think that this would move the overall taxation. What was the number?
So right now, and I did print something.
1.69.
We're currently at 1.69. If we were to remove these two items, it's really not going to move the needle much.
Okay.
Maybe 1/100 of a percent.
Okay.
It's not going to be much money.
Not going to be moved much. Okay.
That helps you all in any way.
It does. It does. Or for me at least. All right. So do we want to take any action on this? Do we have a motion? Or do you guys prefer to keep this on the warrant item?
I'll make a motion that we approve the use of ARPA funds, $10,000 for the backflows.
You have a second?
I'm a little stuck. But if it doesn't move the tax number very much, then I'm not sure it matters where it comes from.
Okay. So that would be no action taken, I believe?
Correct.
Okay.
So we will leave that on the warrant as is.
Okay.
Thank you. The next item that we were also asked to look at was the use of $7,500 in ARPA funds for the repair of a section of rusted pipe for the Town Hall sprinkler system. And we do have a memo in your packet on that. The, excuse me, didn't need to hit that. The estimate for that project came in a little less than this $7,500, but we also were told by the repair company when they were here that they saw additional work that was going to need to be done. So the reason we put the article on in the first place for $7,500 was so if the repair is needed, it's not something that you can wait on. It's an emergency repair. The sprinkler systems will not work if the alarm is going off. And the alarm will continue to go off until the work is repaired. So we did the repair on the first section. Because it was an emergency, we had to do it. So we were replenishing an account that we took it out of to, for that.
With these.
With this. If, if further work is needed on the sprinkler system, and that took several days, and the fire department was here trying to do whatever they could because of the alarm system. But it looked like there may be another area in the system that's going to need repair. So we think that the $7,500 will cover it. Obviously, if additional repair isn't needed, those dollars just remain there to be used for facility, for that particular use.
For that use.
Right. So whether the board wants to use again for ARPA funds or just keep it on the warrant for a tax levy.
All right. Do we have any discussion on the matter?
I, again, through the chair, think this should stay on the warrants.
And do we have any motions on this?
I'll make a motion that we request approval for $7,500 in ARPA funds for the repair of the rusted pipe in the Town Hall sprinkler system.
Do we have a second? Okay. Did you get no action on the matter?
Okay. So that will remain on as the article, as you have it on the warrant.
Yep.
So through the chair, now that you've done that, I appreciate you taking that out of order. Now, if you'd like to go back to your other item, we can do that.
Moving back to Agenda Item 5B. Again, potential vote on October 18th, 2022, Special Town Warrant Articles Number 2, 8, 9, and 11. And this is the point where revisiting these from the previous meeting, where we are to vote to recommend, not recommend, or defer to the petitioner. Do we have any?
So through the chair, and please jump in where needed. And I know the fire chief is here. Initially, we had a line item maybe 2/3 of the way down under Article 2, add a line item to the fire department for the fire mechanic for fleet, for maintaining the fleet apparatus. Following that meeting and a lot of discussion with the finance committee, we went back, we sat down with all of us internally, DPW Fire Rescue Department, and came up with a system that we believe will work. The most important thing here is to get those fire apparatus repaired in a timely manner and to get on track for some of the newer maintenance, preventive maintenance PM that needs to be done on it. And I just want to be clear, it's not that the preventive maintenance wasn't being done specifically, but it can't get done, given the volume of work that DPW has with emergency repairs. So anytime there is an ambulance down or a fire apparatus down, that has to take priority over everything. So we've got to get that repaired versus focusing on the maintenance. So initially, we were coming in to put that fire mechanic in, the fleet mechanic in the fire department. Now we're looking to keep the fleet mechanic in the DPW, in their facility and within DPW with a joint report to both the DPW Director and the Fire Chief. Both have agreed to that. We do that in a couple of other situations here, where a position is funded under one type of account. In this case, it would be ambulance receipts. And it's actually housed in another department. We usually have a joint report. So everyone coordinates together on the use of that position. Again, this position would be dedicated toward the repair and maintenance of fire apparatus, paid for with ambulance receipts. So what you see here is a change from the line item. So rather than saying add line item to the fire department, the new language that I handed you earlier, and I'll just read it. Increase line item 04211-511103. Wages full-time from $637,015 to $673,015 for an additional fleet mechanic. So that's how the article would be proposed to be amended on the floor of town meeting that evening. The, we all agree that this position is very much needed. We, our fleet has grown. The, the, what's the word I'm looking for? The type of equipment has become more sophisticated and repairs are more involved. The apparatus themselves, as well as a lot of other equipment that's not necessarily a moving vehicle, is also, it's very involved. It's very complex. And it's become more difficult and requires more hours and in some cases, probably even some more training, which we would make sure that whoever takes this position would have any appropriate training to do additional work that currently might be being outsourced elsewhere. We may still have to do some outsourcing, correct, Chief? This isn't the end-all. We, there are certain things that we absolutely don't have, the technology, or the equipment, or the manpower to do certain, real specialized, that wouldn't make sense to have that internally. So that would still have to go out. So I think, did I hit all that?
I think you captured it all. Yeah. Very well said.
We'll take these separately.
I believe they go hand in hand.
Yeah, generally, the board takes a vote on the article.
Correct. I believe he means Article 15.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. So Articles, right now, if you were on Article 2, you could take a vote on 2. And when you get to 15, I can explain.
Okay.
15, although I'm happy to.
We've already, yeah, we've already voted on 15.
Right. I'm happy to explain it then. So further, you'll see the language here. So Article 15, we are reducing that by an amount of approximately $35,000. Because first of all, we noticed that we had counted it both in Article 2 and in Article 15. So regardless, that was going to be reduced, because we showed it there twice. So this is just being amended to read that it's equipment for the Fleet Maintenance Division, which will be equipment that's specifically needed for this type of repairs.
Chief, I watched the pre-town meeting. I saw you had no objections to this. Is that, your position remains the same? That's correct. Go on, here. All right. And so first, we will take Article 2. Do we have any discussion on the matter? No? No questions? Do I have a motion on Article 2 to either recommend, not recommend, or defer to the petitioner?
I'll make a motion that we recommend.
I'll second. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to be specific.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It is a vote. For that. Okay. Moving on to Article 8. That was.
The article that we just discussed.
Yeah, for the $10,000 in fund revenues. Okay. Further, any discussion on that matter? Nope?
I'll make a motion that we defer to the petitioner on Article 8.
Okay. And do we have a second?
I guess I'll second, because I don't know that we're going to come to an agreement on that.
We can play it out however you guys like. It's, you know, this is how the sausage is made, so to speak.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
All right.
That motion does not pass. Do we have any further motions?
So if no action is taken, then essentially it's defer to the petitioner.
It becomes a defer.
No. Well, it's just no position was taken.
It's just no position.
Because your vote to defer to the petitioner failed. So it didn't defer to the petitioner, because it didn't pass.
Okay.
So it is no action.
So that's an option, there's no action?
That's what it is right now.
So, and I mean, we could reconsider if that is better for the board.
That was my intention, yeah.
Yeah.
Correct. So yeah, just to be clear, so it wouldn't, it's not an automatic defer to the petitioner, because you just took a vote to defer, and that didn't.
Sure.
So now, if you want to reconsider.
Make a motion to reconsider Article 8.
Okay.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I'll make a motion that we defer to the petitioner on Article 8.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? It is a vote. And moving on to Article 9. And again, that was the same, the $7,500 we had just discussed. I assume no discussion?
No.
And we have a motion.
Make a motion that we defer to the petitioner on Article 9.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It is a vote.
So through the chair, if I can just ask, so I'm just wondering when asked, if when asked questions at town meeting on the defer to the petitioner, should, we'll have to discuss.
I'm happy to discuss it.
Okay.
The chair, Eddie Dislakman really would be free to discuss it. I think we probably have differing takes on why the deferment happened.
Right. Well, I think, right, I think the moderator would have to call on the board to comment, or I would comment on behalf of the board.
Okay.
So maybe at some point.
We can discuss.
I think only if asked by a town meeting member. They may just accept no position as a.
Sure.
A town meeting member may want to know why the finance committee supported, board didn't support, took no action.
That's what I'm saying, right.
Yep.
But we won't know till the night of town meeting. So I guess that question could arise?
Yep. All right. And at that point, I would ask that, you know, any selectmen that wish to speak on the matter, to give their positions on why it didn't pass or didn't move forward or wasn't recommended? Would be allowed to do so?
I mean, for me, I think that would be helpful, because if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, you're not opposed to doing these repairs that are required?
And.
You're opposed to the source of the, so maybe I should ask that question. Is, are you opposed to the town making the repairs? Or are you opposed to the funding source?
I am open to town meeting selecting that funding source. I thought that ARPA would be the best use. I have the majority here, so I do think they need to get done. So I'm not opposed to how it gets done.
Okay. So then, based on that.
Unless the board is willing to reconsider or consider another vote the night of town meeting, when you may have another member.
They'd have to.
Finance Committee is meeting at 6:30 on. 5:30, 5:30. They typically may take a final vote on an item or two that they haven't decided on.
I would very much.
So that's up, that's an option. I'm just saying, that's up to the board.
Yeah. Mr. Chambers understands that he's just one vote here. I think we're all a little bit handcuffed with the fact that we're unanimous or nothing at this point. So I would very much, does anybody have any scheduling conflicts the night of?
I do not. And I did plan to attend, so I could be there at 5:30.
So through the chair, we can check and see if the fourth member is available and planning to come. And if not, then it will hold as is for tonight.
Correct.
And if that person can come, we'll post it. And you can meet at 5:30. Sharon, just to be clear, the town meeting's at 6, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So it would be a half hour before you.
All right.
Okay.
Very good.
So we'll get back to you and let you know.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to warrant Article 11. It was in regard to overlay surpluses and free cash for the Town Stabilization Funds. Do we have any questions? No?
I'll make a motion to recommend Article 11.
I'll second.
All right. With a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It is a vote. Thank you for that. We have no gift acceptances, proclamations, or recognitions. Moving on to Agenda Item 6A. The, I'll leave that to the Town Manager for the installation of the new charging station.
Through the chair, I could invite up our Economic Development Coordinator slash Energy Manager, Brooke Kelpin. She's done a great job working on this project. I think it was one of the first projects that you took on when you started here.
That's correct.
As spring, early spring?
Yes.
So go ahead.
So out on this section of the parking lot, the back section of the parking lot, there is a, there's one dual port. So there's two connectors to go to two separate cars, Level 2 EV charging station. It was installed about two weeks ago. It should be operational. It has to be operational by January 7th of 2023. And they're waiting on the communication gateway to be delivered. I guess those are on back order all across the country, unfortunately. So just waiting on that. That communicates between the internet and the software on the charging station. So we'll need that before it can be operational. But do you have any question?
I do, what, just why the January 7th deadline? The funding sources or?
Yep, for the grant funding sources through the Mass EVIP program.
Okay.
So that was their deadline. It was six months from the effective date of the contract.
Which was a challenge to the chair, because we had to go out to bid.
Yeah.
And get all that done in the very short period of time and then get the work underway, because it's a reimbursement.
Yes.
Great work. And I would like to, if that becomes, if that communication court becomes an issue, I'd like to, I mean, I hate that we'd be kicked out of funding for a technicality of delays.
We can request extensions, I believe. We can request extensions, I believe, yes.
So is this for open use for everyone for municipal vehicles?
It's a public charging station, so residents, it's open to the public, so residents can use it, and hopefully, when we do get an electric vehicle, we'll be able to charge the town vehicle on it as well.
And then the charge backs go to the town, or is there any?
Yes, we haven't decided on a fee yet because we haven't gotten to that point yet, but once we do decide enough fee, I believe it'll just be enough to cover the cost of the electricity used for the charging station, and any surplus would come back to the town.
Thank you.
And through the chair, we do, just a reminder, we did receive a state earmark for the purchase of two electric vehicles that are also back order, we extended that grant out to December of two thousand twenty-three in hopes of train.
It was a year ago, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it, they're on back order, they're really on back order. It's amazing. There was a, yeah, it's, it's a little challenging to get those types of vehicles.
Yeah. Any good? And, we good? Any further questions? Thank you so much, good work. All right, we covered B and C, and moving on to agenda item sixty, municipal aggregation rates for November twenty-two through November twenty-three.
Yes, through the chair, there is a memo in your packet, a detailed memo, along with a copy of the public notification on this, but just in general, we've posted everything in accordance with DPU regulations, and our, we were able to secure a rate of point two three eight two two per kilowatt hour for a twelve-month period from November of this year, two thousand twenty-two, to November of two thousand twenty-three. This is approximately a little bit more than thirty percent lower than the national grid winter basic residential rate that they just announced, and theirs is point three three eight nine one. So I think the important thing is if anyone had previously opted out of our, our program and are looking to opt back in, there's instructions on our website, you can contact Brooke for more information, contact Colonial Power. There's no cost to opt back in, there's no cost to opt back out. It is purely up to the consumer what program they'd like to go with. I will say that we've had this now for eight years, and the first time the town's rate came in higher than national grid was this past May, and it was because we had to go out to bid for our energy costs. It was the timing. We had to go out in March and April, which was right at the time that the war broke out, and in the Ukraine, and that definitely affected world markets and world, it's, it's a global market for the purchase of energy. So global factors affected far more than just national factors might affect it. So also for national grid to say for them, they also had to go out in a difficult time. They had to go out a couple of months after we had to go out, which it had gotten even worse. So we went with the twelve months, we looked at twelve months, you know, we looked at all different terms, and we felt it wouldn't be prudent to lock in, that the rate wasn't, it was hundreds of a, of a penny less to lock in for a much longer period, where if this passes, we didn't want to be locked in at this rate because we're hoping that it will pass, and the factors that led to this will be different a year from now. If not, obviously, we are in the same situation that we have to go back out and try again.
Yeah.
But it didn't seem the right, it seemed like the right decision not to lock us in to a rate at this amount, and it was close to this amount to go eighteen months. You saw a little bit of an adjustment, if, if we had gone out three years, that seems like a very high, you know, it's, it's one of, yeah, it's one of the highest rates that, you know, historically, any of the electric providers have seen. So we didn't want to lock it, lock that rate in for three years, whereas last time we were able to lock a rate in at nine, we knew that was a good rate. So there's more information on the website. Colonial Power has phone numbers on there, as well as you can reach out, send by email if you have any questions on it, but this does start, broke out with the November read, so if you get your bill and it's your October read, it's still gonna be the current provider, which is Dynergy. It will change to, I'm gonna say it right, Nextera Energy Services in November, so with those bills. So if you were to go on Colonial Power's site now, today, you'd probably still see the Dynergy rate because that's the rate we're currently in right now. If you go on it, I think in a couple of weeks, they're gonna be allowed to change it, and so you, you can still get into the Nextera rate, you just have to click on one more button to get in, and then you see it.
And you'll see that.
But a lot of people immediately opened it and said, oh, it's still Dynergy. Well, it is still Dynergy until November, but the information's all there.
Also received the mailer today with all the political ads, but it was in there, and it has the instructions, as you mentioned, so.
Oh, great, thank you. Yeah, that was being mailed out on Friday, so we weren't sure when that was gonna, so there were two different postcards that went with that. One went to the current participants in the municipal aggregation program, and a different one went to those who had opted out with instructions on, if you do want to consider opting back in, here's how to do it. And for those who are already in it and didn't opt out, you do nothing, you just stay there, no chance.
And I know there were some people opting out when these numbers first came, but again, this was kind of foreseen that it would happen just the way that it did. Are numbers coming back?
We won't know yet because the cards just went out.
Okay.
So we won't know, people can't opt back in too early, they have to wait to a certain point to opt back in, so we won't be able to see that, but I think we assume that those who opted out did so because it was a rate savings, and therefore, now that there's a savings to get back in, they're gonna be doing that. I think we had, it was under eight hundred, had dropped down, so it was less than, it was around nine percent had, had opted out, so we think that those will come back.
And this is about a, on your average bill, about a sixty dollar savings?
Yeah, the savings over the end grid rate, based on the average usage, is about sixty dollars a month. And it was higher for businesses because obviously they, they pay more, they use more.
Yeah.
So it's, it is a good savings. Obviously, it, it's hard to say that it's a good savings when you're paying twenty-three.
Comparatively.
You know, comparatively, it, it's good for what the market is now, it's just, obviously, this is a really bad year for utility rates. It's, everyone saw it coming, we knew it, but it still hurts, it's, it's an expense that people have to, have to pick up. So it's more than what you're paying now, it's more than what you were paying a year ago, but it's less than what you pay if you stayed on national grid basically.
Okay. So any further questions from the board? No? All right, no tabled items, we have no select board items. Does anybody have any questions or amendments needed to the minutes of nine twelve that were filed in your packets?
Nope.
Nope? Okay, and with that, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to accept the meeting minutes?
We don't, we don't normally do that.